I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of December 13th, 2021 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 13th, 2021, according to public law 1975, Chapter 231. May I have a roll call, please?
Council President Farkas.
Here.
Councilman Legati.
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Here, Madam Chair.
Councilman Paretty.
Here.
Councilman Zambrana.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence, followed by a motion to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as it is.
We were going to have a presentation this evening, but one of the presenters isn't feeling well, so we'll postpone that until the next regular council meeting, which will be January 24th. We're having a reorg on Monday, January 3rd, and the regular meeting will be the 24th of January. So now we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Are there any comments or corrections? Or wait, I need to get a motion to approve the minutes, sorry.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Legati, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any comments, corrections? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we'll move on to the building claims. Will the clerk please read by title only the Bill List Resolution 268-2021?
Resolution 268, 2021, is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of $8,41,557.05.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Think a motion that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Legati, second by Councilman Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Here, Madam Chair.
Councilman Paretty.
Here.
Councilman Zambrana.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence, followed by a motion to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as it is.
We were going to have a presentation this evening, but one of the presenters isn't feeling well, so we'll postpone that until the next regular council meeting, which will be January 24th. We're having a reorg on Monday, January 3rd, and the regular meeting will be the 24th of January. So now we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Are there any comments or corrections? Or wait, I need to get a motion to approve the minutes, sorry.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Legati, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any comments, corrections? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we'll move on to the building claims. Will the clerk please read by title only the Bill List Resolution 268-2021?
Resolution 268, 2021, is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of $8,41,557.05.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Think a motion that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Legati, second by Councilman Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilman Paretty.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, and having been reviewed by the Borough Council, will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. I would like to pull Resolutions 280 and 281 to share with the audience, but we don't need to pull them from the vote. And the reason that I'm doing that is that we have two people on the council who will be leaving our group this year, so I would like to recognize, first, Councilman Nick Legati, who has served the Borough of Milltown for the last six, two terms, and we thank his family for being here as well. I have, actually, a resolution for you, but what I wanted to highlight was not only all that Nick has done for the council, I mean, all of the list of all the boards that he's been on and the subcommittees, he's had public safety for the last several years. He's been instrumental in working with the seniors and getting the HUD transportation and the buses for the seniors. He has been a valuable resource to get poll workers through Milltown, so there are so many things that Nick has done, not to mention all of the other things that he does for the folks around the town. So I will just read really quickly. Whereas the Borough of Milltown, mayor and council, would like to recognize Nicholas Legati for his years of service to this community. And then we have all of the bills, and more importantly, Nick continually sought to improve the quality of life for all borough residents and demonstrated foresight and leadership in policy decisions and operations of borough government. Now therefore I, Trina Mayor, Mayor of the Borough of Milltown, together with the Borough Council, do hereby honor Nicholas Legati and thank him for all of his hard work and service, and urge all our residents to join me in our heartfelt thanks. So Nick, thank you so much. It's been a privilege to work with you, Nick. And if anyone else on the council has anything that, I'm not going to read every single thing because they both have so many, but if there's anything in particular you want to highlight, feel free. And now for the council president, Randy Farkas. Randy has been here even longer, so he has even more committees, and even before he joined the council, you know, he was, did the, started the haunted river walk and was involved with the Fourth of July, so he has impacted the borough in many, many ways. And there are several things since he's been on the council through utilities and rec. You know, we have a lot of the grants that we got, the Schwenderman property grant was all, Randy was instrumental in, he and James this year getting the lights for the Little League field, so there are accomplishments too numerous to mention, and a lot of the department, you know, the committees and things that he has influenced are on there. So I will read, whereas the Borough of Milltown, mayor and council, would like to recognize Randy Farkas for his years of service to the community. Randy was elected in 2006, so that goes back a ways now. So his six terms devoted innumerable hours as a member to the committees, whereas Councilman Farkas carried out his duties as an elected official and as a citizen of the Borough of Milltown with enthusiasm and a conscientious, thoughtful, and caring manner, and dedicated himself to advancing the spirit of volunteerism that has helped make Milltown Borough the town we love. Now therefore I, Trina Mayor, Mayor of the Borough of Milltown, together with the entire council, do hereby honor Randy Farkas and thank him for all of his hard work and service, and urge all of our residents to join me in our heartfelt thanks. We look forward to having a couple of new members on, Mr. Potter and Mr. Revolinsky, but your influence for all these years and all that you've done is greatly appreciated by me and certainly all of us up here, so thanks again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So now we can go back to the regular.
Page five.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. Hold on. All right. So now we will have audience comments. Next is comments from the audience on consent agenda resolutions 269, 2021 through 281, 2021. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please step to the microphone, identify yourself to the clerk, and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the consent agenda. So if anyone wants to speak now on the resolutions, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close audience comments, and then say to the rest of the council, does anyone want to pull any other resolutions from the consent?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Could you pull 274 for me?
274? Sure. Anyone else? Okay, there being no additional request to pull any other resolutions, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the borough clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and borough council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the borough clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the borough clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Oh, will the clerk please, so the clerk reads, maybe you'll tell him if they're voting. I recall the roll.
I just want to confirm with Councilman Zambrana that you're okay with the vote? You just wanted to pull for questions and discussion?
For questions, yes.
Okay. Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilman Paretty.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. And now we will, will the clerk please read Resolution 274, 2021, by title?
It's the governing body certification of the annual audit for the year 2020.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
A motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilwoman Legati. Any discussion?
I would just like to ask our order or a couple of comments that are contained in the general comment section, if that's possible.
Do you mind coming up to the podium?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Even mayor, members of the council, good to see you all. Would you like me to go through a little bit on our order report, or just want to have some questions and answers?
I really, you know what, that's actually a good idea. And if we get to those, then we'll.
Okay, sure. Just, you know, real briefly, in terms of the report, this is on your 123120 financial statements, and the report itself is unmodified opinion on your financials. That's a, of course, that's a, what's called an agbo basis opinion, because New Jersey follows a different set of accounting principles than the rest of the nation, but, so if you read the opinion, it's a little confusing, but again, it's an unmodified or clean opinion. And just real quickly, with respect to your fund balances, you had an uptick in your current fund over previous year by about $320,000, but that was also, you had a special emergency involved in your revenues during 2020 based on COVID-19, which was appropriate. So you actually upticked about $200,000, absent the special emergency. Water utility also improved by about $300,000, and electric was, stayed about the same. So, you know, your fund balances improved year over year from 19 to 20. And again, there was three recommendations in the general comment section, which obviously you're required to read. There's, we review from time to time payroll forms that should be on file, and there are several that weren't available, so you're going to have to go back and correct your procedures on that, but that's, you're not alone, this is something that we're focusing in on recently. You have inter-fund balances that need to be cleared, there's one fund perhaps borrowing money from another fund, and they really should be paid a lot before the end of the year. And the last comment was about your water and sewer utility. There was an adjustment that occurred in your 2019 report that was not reflected in your books of records. There's no, there was no adjustment made in the records to reflect how the report of what it was reported upon. So we had spent some time trying to figure out what may have or may not have happened, but again, that's something that you always should have when you have an audit, and the audit is finalized, those adjustments that occurred in the audit process should be reflected in your records.
So that's what I wanted to just tap into. So both of these adjustments really have to do with previous audits?
Well, basically, the third one, yes. The second one, that was in there last year, and it wasn't corrected, so we're recommending it needs to be corrected then in 2020.
Would that have been, would that have been made possible by the late receipt?
Well, absolutely, yeah, that's absolutely party issue. That's correct, sir, yes. Yeah, I mean, you didn't review the audit so, until the current year, so you could not have made those adjustments, basically. That's correct.
Okay, great, great. And then the only other question I wanted to ask was, it does say that the borough is not required to prepare and file a corrective action plan for the year 2019. 2019?
That's correct. That's right.
2020?
Yes, you will, yes, yes.
Because of these?
Because of these recommendations, yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you very much. Nice to see you all. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
All right, so seeing no other comments or questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilman Paretty.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go on to the reports. We'll start with the Department of Finance, Administration, and Planning, Councilwoman Phil Zambrana.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really don't have any questions about the finance part of the House, Andy, that was really what I wanted to ask about. I thank you for that information. The only other, I guess, report I have tonight is for the Revitalization Committee. That meeting will be held tomorrow. As with all Revitalization Committee meetings that are held on the second Tuesday of every month, mostly by Zoom link, the Zoom link password and login are on the Borough website. Look forward to letting in anyone tomorrow who wants to attend. We're always looking for new members to start off 2022 on a bang. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. And I'll say congratulations for completing the audit this year. I know you want to get to get it done by the end of the year, so I thank you and Jeanette and Mr. Hodgelick for taking care of that. Appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Public Safety, Councilman Nick Legati.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of reports tonight. My first one will be the Senior Center report. Almost two weeks ago, we had our, well, I had my last wrap session with the seniors, a very productive wrap session. We got a few items crossed off our list from the previous wrap session. It's an ongoing list, and I'm going to miss that, but hopefully, turning 55, I can join the seniors now and be on the other side of that table. There is an ongoing search for a bus driver. Keep an eye out for the Milltown Senior Center webpage for updates. Soon as possible, we'll be getting that revamped for you. Always looking for Meals on Wheels volunteers, please contact the senior director for more details at 732-296-0681. Another, I'm going to reinforce, another one is Toys for Tots drop-off, unwrapped toys for kids is located in Borough Hallway, right there. That concludes my first report, Madam Mayor. My second report is the Milltown Fire Department Monthly Report for November. Drills, three; meetings, one; fire calls, seven; work details, five; total incidents, General information. The Milltown Fire Department, Santa took part in their tree lighting ceremony on December 3rd. Milltown's Fire Department Annual Fundraiser Pictures with Santa were performed on Saturday, December 4th. On Saturday, December 18th, watch for annual Santa tour around Milltown from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Membership. We have one resignation and one new member. Sergio Orizary moved out of town and resigned after nine years of service. We wish him luck and thank him for his service to the residents of Milltown. Shane Ewing was sworn in by Borough Council and will be sworn in at the department meeting on December 21st. Training. Members drilled on rapid intervention team techniques utilizing an obstacle firefighter down course laid out in the firehouse. Mayday training and holiday preparations were accomplished on drill nights as well. Vehicle maintenance. Car 81 had a steering issue and is being fixed by the borough mechanic. Car 82 would night start, and the starter was replaced by the borough mechanic. Engine 72 is still out of service for tank warranty, will hopefully be back in December. Ladder 73 hydraulic leak, parts were ordered by vendor. Equipment maintenance. Three scuba bottles were sent out for hydrostatic testing, and two bottles were repaired for leak valves. Batteries were replaced on all scuba packs and personal pass alarms. Fire Department radio channel is still not working from dispatch console. Dispatch is using a portable radio until the system is fixed next month with parts that were ordered. Building and grounds. The ply-moment exhaust system compressor failed. Clean Air and the company that installed the system will replace the compressor, which is under warranty. A diamond plate was installed in the kitchen on the wall next to the stove. Items pending and need attention. Door keypad programmed. Free Verizon Internet service installed for TV and phone. Phones activated so that there is phone service in the firehouse. That one I'm going to leave in the trusty hands of our business administrator, Jeanette, and I'm sure she will work diligently with the fire department to get those accomplished. Members are needed. Candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse Monday nights at 6:30 PM or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. Respectfully submitted, Stephen Battaglia, Chief of the Department. My last report, Madam Mayor, is from the Milltown Police Department, their monthly report. Between November 8th, 2021, and December 3rd, 2021, police have responded to 1,094 calls for service. During this period, police conducted 115 radar details in numerous locations. Police made 145 motor vehicle stops. Police made three arrests, which include shoplifting and contempt of court. Police responded to six motor vehicle accidents, which involved only minor injuries. The Milltown Police Department remains in compliance with all mandated training, testings, testing, and directives set forth by the state and the New Jersey Attorney General's Office and the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. Police continue to report suspicious activity, traffic concerns, and non-emergent type calls to 732-828-1100. Police will determine necessary response. Emergency and life-threatening calls, please use 911. Residents are reminded to report any concerns and complaints by using the official Borough website or by calling the Milltown Police directly. The Milltown Police Department does not monitor and will not react, reply, or respond to any comments or complaints posted on any third-party social media sites. Thank you to the mayor and council and our residents for our continued support and cooperation through the year. Happy and safe holidays to all. Chief Brian Cannelli. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Utilities, Council President Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll start with the Electric Utility Report. For the prior month, removed American flags along North and South Main Street. Inspect, repair, and relamp the holiday decorations. Install holiday lighting fixtures on poles across the roadways. Emergency job to repair a large broken branch from a house service on North Main Street. The tree was also pruned around the wires to prevent future outages. Emergency repair of a primary insulator on Highland Drive. The conductor came off of the bushing and needed to be retied. And there was also an emergency removal of a large branch laying in primary wires on JFK Drive. Other dead and damaged limbs were cut from the tree at this time. A new service drop was installed at 25 Ackerman Avenue. Pole inspections were performed in the area of Janet Court and North Wilson Avenue. Minor repairs were made from the ground. Lighting repairs were performed in the municipal building parking lot. Several lamps were changed and ballast repairs were performed as needed. Two high-pressure sodium parking lot lights were out behind the police department and needed ballast. We elected to convert the existing fixtures to LED type to save energy and reduce maintenance. An electric service was installed at 25 Ackerman Avenue to a new home. I think I said that already. Electric department member assisted the Water Department to repair a water main break on Fisher Drive. Electric department members assisted the Water Department in supervising and operating Church Street Pump Lift Station while the new muffin monster was installed. Utilities assisted the Billing Department with various billing issues. And now for the Water Sewer Report. Along with all daily pump checks, markouts, and work orders, the Water Department has the following report. Eighteen water meters have been upgraded and moved outside as this program continues. Whole streets have been marked out for PSENG due to gas line project, and all markouts have been completed for tree removals that are taking place all over town. The Water Department, along with DPW, fixed a water main break on Clay and Meyer. Investigations were done for multiple breaks at Tracy and Fisher Drive, and these needed to be contracted out to be repaired. The muffin monster, which is the main grinder for the Church Street Pump Station, has been replaced. The Department would like to remind residents to sign up for nixel.com. We are using this as notification of water main breaks and emergency shutdowns. And as always, please check Channel 15 and milltownnj.org for Water Department updates. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Public Works and Recycling, Councilwoman Anna Newbauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with all of her side collections, the DPW has the following to report. Park bathroom facilities have been winterized for the upcoming season. Beef pickup has taken place at Par Don Tennis Courts, the Senior Center, Joffrey Park, and Borough Hall. The Borough Holiday Decorations were completed for the successful tree lighting on December 3rd. Tree removal has taken place throughout town. The DPW, along with a contractor, will continue tree removals until we complete the current list. The DPW, alongside with the Water Department, helped repair a water main break at Tracy and Fisher and another break at Weller Court and Clay Street. Pahal repairs ongoing as the weather permits, and curb repair has taken place on Clay Street. Holiday garbage collection will be as follows, because there's some changes. Friday, December 24th, will be collected on Wednesday, December 22nd, and all other collection days stay the same. Friday, December 31st, will be collected on Wednesday, December 29th. All other collection days that week will stay the same. Please check Channel 15 and milltownnj.org for DPW updates. And for the Green Team, we did move our meeting, so, of a report for them, but we're going to be meeting this Wednesday. And that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you. And next, we'll go on to the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, if she's up to it, Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell.
All right, you told me, can you hear me well enough?
Yes, very well, thanks.
Okay. All right, I'm going to begin with the library report, and I did all my reports in a year in review style, so I hope that's okay?
Great, thank you.
We're not quite done with 2021, but to date, the library has put more than 25,000 books and other media into circulation. Just a stunning number. I commend them for the great job they've done in keeping the good things that came about during the pandemic, such as curbside and after-hours pickup, while also reopening for patrons to visit the library in person. Another example of keeping the good is by providing a balance of outdoor and indoor storytimes for children. providing a balance of outdoor and indoor storytimes for children. A great deal of work was done to beautify the space around the library and thoughtfully placed plantings, birdhouses, a rain barrel, and a few coats of paint. This was all done under the leadership of Bonnie Sterling, who will be retiring at the end of the month, and she will be missed. The Friends of the Library did a fantastic job, too, during this year of transition and uncertainty. They found new and creative ways to conduct their fundraising events that support library programs and services. Their financial support allows the library to purchase items, make improvements, and enhance programming. Both the library board and the Friends of the Library are staffed by truly dedicated and wonderful volunteers, and it was my sincere pleasure to work with them throughout twenty twenty-one. Moving on, next to the Board of Health. Our health officer conducts inspections of food establishments and investigate investigations into health-related complaints. Both services made more challenging by COVID. The Board of Health continued to oversee the protection of health in the borough and have jurisdiction over vital statistics this year. The state threw up a curveball by instituting a new system documenting births, something we're still sorting out. We provided a very successful annual rabies vaccination clinic for the domestic pests of Milltown and Middlesex County residents. The health of fellow residents was always at the forefront of the minds of the committed group of volunteers who serve on the Board of Health. The role took on increased importance due to the pandemic. It was certainly a privilege to work with the board in twenty twenty-one. And last, but by no means least, the Environmental Commission. They were extremely productive in twenty twenty-one. One of the biggest initiatives was tackling the overgrown butterfly pollinator garden in Milton Park. I recall that we strategically started that project on Earth Day. Though it was in April, it felt like one of the coldest days of the year and certainly one of the windiest. But none of that deterred the resolve of the fuzz-bath songbirds who pruned and pulled weeds and invasive species with gusto. Several cleanups were performed there as well as throughout the borough. The Environmental Commission provided input on many projects coming before the planning boards as well as on new stormwater legislation. Ongoing environmental commission initiatives include further enhancements to the stormwater ordinance, the introduction of an invasive and nuisance species ordinance, and improvements at this random property. Environmental Commission excelled at working cross-functionally with borough departments and committees, industry associations such as AMJEC, and grant funding organizations. The fantastic volunteers on this commission are tireless supporters of the environment and our community, and we all benefit from their dedication. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Department of Recreation, Councilman James Coretti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The fall soccer clinics concluded this past Saturday, December eleventh. We hope everyone enjoyed the clinic, and we look forward to seeing everyone in the spring. The Recreation Department would like to thank Remax Country for the delicious cookies, cocoa, and for raffling off a fifty-five-inch television at our annual tree lighting ceremony. It was a great turnout, and we hope you all enjoy the festivities. Fall yoga, fall volleyball, and fall men's basketball will all conclude in the next week. Registration for the winter sessions will open on Friday, December seventeenth. To register, please go to the following website, www-register.capturepoint.com/boroughofmilltown. Winter youth basketball registration will be closing on Tuesday, December twenty-first. To register, please go to the same website, www-register.capturepoint.com/boroughofmilltown. We are still looking for program dates for our A. M. and P. M. SAC program. Please contact the Recreation Office if you would like to apply at seven three two eight two eight twenty-one hundred, extension one four one. Please remember, if you are interested in renting any Milltown park, please contact the Recreation Department directly to acquire a park facility usage form. Please note that we are still accepting non-perishable food donations for Milltown neighbors in need, as well as for the Middlesex County Food Bank, which also supports our local Milltown residents. You may drop items off at the Borough Hall and place them in the green bins in the hallway of the main entrance during normal business hours. Please do not leave food in the police entrance vestibule. Our warmest wishes for a happy and healthy holiday season. For the Rec Committee, our Rec Committee meeting, final meeting, will be Wednesday, seven P. M. The link to the Zoom meeting is on the Borough website. You've heard a couple others say it already, but we encourage all who are interested in getting involved to fill out the citizen leadership application form located on the Borough's website, and look out for meeting dates in the new year. The Human Relations Committee had its final meeting on December seventh. The A. R. C. also hosted its first book club meeting on Wednesday, December eighth, which was led by Pastor Matt. Look out for more information about our next book club meeting next month. I do want to thank everyone involved in the committee's first year and all their hard work to ensure the committee's success. I look forward to seeing their continued success next year. And finally, the Historic Preservation will host its final meeting on Thursday, the sixteenth, at six thirty P. M. The meeting link for the Zoom is on the Borough website as well. And that concludes my reports.
Great. Thank you. Administrator report, anything, Jeanette?
No report, thank you.
Okay. Engineer report?
Just three items tonight, Madam Mayor. First, the pre-construction meeting was held with the contract reforming the water system improvements on Chestnut and Highland Drive area. Meeting went very well. We're anxious to see him start up. Obviously, the winter is a concern and will coordinate with the Borough. We are finalizing emergency response plan for the submission to NJDEP, which is a requirement of the NJDEP for response to water system issues that can or could occur. We'll have that done by year end. And lastly, we are receipt of shop drawings for the lighting at Gloria Bradford Park. We are waiting an installation schedule from Musco, which is the company doing the work, and will provide same to the Borough as soon as possible.
Great.
Other than that, on behalf of my partners and folks at CME, we'd like to wish the mayor, Borough Council, and the people of Milltown a healthy holiday season.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Anyone have any questions? For Mr. McClellan?
Just one question.
Sure.
Hey, Mike. Musco lighting, no idea when that install might be coming through?
We're waiting for a schedule for him. Obviously, we get shop drawings first. Readily available equipment is another question naturally we need to get from them, but we'll try to get you a schedule as soon as possible. We'll send a note around to everyone as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mike.
They know we're anxious.
So, Mike, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I heard Council President Farkas and Councilwoman Newbauer mention the water main breaks on Tracy, where the water line breaks. So, is there some way in the future when we just pave that road, right? So, and then the water main breaks and then we have to dig it up again. Is there some way to check, or is there any correlation with the equipment and the paving linked to the water main breaks, or a way to not pave our road and then have to dig it up a year later?
Ideally, with a road reconstruction project, when they occur, we typically recommend that if funds permit, that you update your water lines should they be, you know, in excess of, say, twenty-five to fifty years old, depending on the materials. The issue you have really is that the funds for these projects come from Department of Transportation. They do not fund the water system replacement. So, unless the Borough had additional funds, it becomes complicated. My understanding, these were valve issues, and according to your supervisor utilities indicated that the soils actually have eroded away the bolts. And what that would be indicative of is high acid soils, which those valves have been in there for some time.
Okay.
So, obviously, with this heightened awareness of the acid soil condition, we can look at it when we do further road improvements there. But those valves have been in there for a while, and if funds permit, I would like to be able to change your sewer and your water on all the streets when you do reconstruction projects because that would avoid these problems. But in light of your financial concerns, it's something that is not done.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Borough Attorney report, anything?
No report. Just a thank you to Council President Farkas and Councilman Legati for their years of service. It was a pleasure working with both of you, and wishing everybody in the Borough a happy and safe holiday season and new year.
Thank you. Same to all of you for your team. Now, it comes to me. What I was thinking of, listening to everyone do the report, is how driving around Milltown or going to events like the tree lighting, the Historical Society had an open house the other day, the Fire Department had a party, and, you know, how everyone comes together to make, to do the job to make it nice for Milltown. It looks festive. The tree lighting was probably the biggest crowd I've ever seen, but it takes a whole group of individuals and departments to bring this all together, the D. P. W., the Rec Department, the Fire Department, you know, all of the folks that really do a lot. So, I'm pleased to see how much goes on throughout each department to, you know, serve the people of Milltown, as well as all of the committees. Everybody reports on their committee, and that consists of you, the residents of Milltown. So, it's much appreciated how much attention and care that people give, and it goes back to the spirit of volunteerism. And I will mention that I was remiss before, so I didn't mention the big Kahuna that Council President Farkas had to do with, which was the electric substation. So, sorry. I was sort of going off script. But, you know, I will say that, you know, we sit up here, everybody sees us at meetings, but I hope everyone realizes that these two gentlemen have been through multiple emergencies, hurricanes, storms, so many other things that they need to address, and not even counting, you know, the committee meetings, all of the other things. So, it really is a labor of love to do this for the Borough of Milltown and to do it for as long and as well as they did. We are fortunate, and we can't thank you enough for all of your time and energy on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And I wish all of you a very happy holiday season, and we will be here. The next meeting will be January third, where we have a reorg, and we will do a State of the Borough, and we look forward, and do get your citizen leadership, because if you want to be involved, you can do the citizen leadership online and become part of one of the Borough committees. So, with that, I will move on to all business. Does any member of the council have any all business to bring for the council tonight? Hearing none. I will close that and go on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business to bring for us this evening? Hearing none. I will go on to audience comments. The public comment of this portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer. If a member of the public has a specific question they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Mr. Einbinder. And Robert. Good evening.
Stand over here, please. Thank you, Robert. Hi, Russ Einbinder, two twenty B. South Main Street, Milltown, that is. Right, Robert? You live in Milltown? Right? North Thurs, right? Right moat. See, I've only been there a thousand times. You think I know the name of the street? The reason I should know the name of the street, Robert, what are we doing tonight?
Lights.
What, lights? What are you going to be doing? That's right. We're going to be driving around. Robert's been doing it for most of the last decade. I drive, Robert films.
Great.
So, you guys that don't know that, Robert Shulman has been doing it for almost a decade. I'll make sure he gets the credit he deserves for those wonderful lights you see every year. And we're starting again tonight, right after this meeting, so I don't want to hold you up so we can get out of here. Maybe stop and dunk the donuts, and then we'll go. All right, Robert?
Good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, keep your lights on for the next few nights. Robert and I will be around filming.
Well, you do a great job. It's always a treat to see them. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, I will close audience comments and look for a motion to adjourn.
Counsel.
Oh, sorry, Mike. My mistake. I was trying to get home and get my lights on. Counsel comment. Does any member of the council have any? I thought you were all awfully quiet and all the new business I forgot we had.
Madam Mayor, just one comment. Just one comment. So, I just wanted to thank, I know we've honored Councilman Farkas and Councilman Legati already, but I wanted to personally thank both of them for their guidance, their mentorship over the last two years, most of which was spent behind a computer under COVID, but most of all for your friendship, both of you. I hope you both continue to be involved in the town in some way, shape, or form. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Madam Mayor, I do.
Good.
If you will allow me and indulge me for a few minutes here.
Of course.
First things I'd like to say is happy holidays to all and a safe new year. I see Mr. David Potter in the audience tonight, and I'd like to congratulate him on being Councilman-elect and to wish him good luck in his term. I owe a special thanks to a few people, and I'm going to list them. I would like to thank the Business Administrator Jeanette Lawrenson and her staff. I would like to thank the Borough Clerk Mimi Mailer and her staff. I would like to thank Ralph Jeznowski and his staff, not only for Public Works, for Utilities as well. I have worked with Public Safety, and I've worked closely with Police Chief Brian Cannelli and all of our police officers. I owe them a very big debt of service. I've also worked close with past fire chiefs and the current Fire Chief Steve Battaglia and all the volunteer firemen. I owe them a very big gratitude as well. I'd like to thank the Borough Attorney, Mr. Peter Vignolo. Thank you for your guidance over all the years. I'd like to thank the Borough Engineer, Mike McClewen, and all of his staff at CME for likewise all of your guidance over these years. Russ Einbinder, a very big thank you for all you do and your volunteerism. Ultimately, I would like to thank my two-term running mate, Randy Farkas. His mentorship for me when I first came on, you can't put a value on it. It was, you know, his knowledge of this town is unmatched by anyone, and I appreciate everything that he's done for me and he's done for the people of this town for the last sixteen years. Ultimately, I'd like to thank my family. Your sacrifice has been well appreciated. Thank you for allowing me to do this. Ultimately, I'm going to say thank you for everything we've accomplished so far, and good luck for everything that we will accomplish in the future. Be well, do good work, keep in touch. Thank you all very much. It has been my honor to serve Milltown.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, we're going a little out of order. I just want to echo Councilman's.
Keep that order.
And just say my farewells to Councilman Legati and Council President Farkas and how much I've looked up to you guys over the past two years that I've been on council and prior to being on council, and thank you for all the mentorship and guidance that you've provided during that time.
Thank you. For me, I know some people have to get, take pictures of lights and stuff, so I'm just going to say what Nick said, I agree with a hundred percent. And thank you, and right back at you, Nick. Thank you.
Okay. And the other, anything else? I love you. All right. With that, I will ask council for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Legati. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we will see you January third.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trina, you on, my little?